Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Monday, October 24th, 2022, regular session of the Carmel High School Board. Roll call, our secretary currently is not here with us this evening, so all we have Ms. Manenberg, Mr. Kerschner, and Mrs. Jackson and myself present. Will you please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance? We're going to start tonight with a presentation of our National Merit Semi-finalists. I would like to invite Mrs. Melinda Stefan up to the podium. Can you not hear me? Okay. In the meantime, I'll talk louder. Before we get started with some congratulations and some accolades for some of the best and the brightest at Carmel High School, I would like to take a moment to thank you, parents and guardians, for all of the work that you have played in this. It is definitely not without the support of your parents and those who you live with that you've been able to get to this point. So first, I'd like to say congratulations to all of you who've helped get them here. All right, we will now celebrate the ones who actually took the test.
Dr. Beresford and members of the board, it is always with great pleasure and pride that Carmel High School presents the class of 2023 National Merit Semi-finalists to you tonight. Each year, over 1.5 million juniors take the preliminary SAT, or we all know it as the PSAT, which qualifies them for consideration in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Of these 1.5 million students, less than 1% are recognized as National Merit Semi-finalists as a result of their exemplary score on the PSAT. Once named as semi-finalists, these students are invited to apply for finalist status, and they compete for one of 2,500 scholarships worth $2,500 each. Semi-finalists who earn finalist status are also considered for corporate scholarships and merit scholarships at their chosen colleges and universities. Carmel High School is excited to share that 56 current seniors have been named National Merit Semi-finalists this year. During the month of September, these 56 seniors, along with their CHS counselors, worked to complete the application for finalist consideration. The extensive application provided more in-depth information about these very talented and multifaceted students, including academic and extracurricular accomplishments, a student essay, and a counselor letter. These seniors will earn their, will learn of their status as finalist in late January, and whether they have been awarded scholarships throughout the spring semester. At this time, I would like to present our class of 2023 National Merit Semi-finalists. And please note, due to the size of the group and a number of conflicts, we have added an alternate recognition on November 14th for those who are unable to attend tonight. So you'll get to hear this again. So, I would love to present to you our semi-finalists. If you would come up, and Dr. Beresford's going to congratulate you and also give out certificates, it sounds like. And then I think you're going to go around to the front and let the board congratulate you, or you're just going to go, and you're going to go there and stay there, so we can get you a pic, a photo. So, Tanae Acharya. Abigail Bailey. Jason Chia. Avery Guo.
We can clap. You get a clap, too. My microphone's working now. Didn't mean to yell at you guys.
Eric Guo. It always improves over time. Hanan He. Christian Horasku. Amy Lynn Ho. Lauren J. Daniel Johnson. Archid Kalra. Noah Kim. Shreya Krishnan. Veneet Kundar. Nolan Latrell. Cheniao Lu. Allison Ma. Laura Martins. Nathan Martin. Katie Mayer. Logan O'Connell. Amoga Palaru. Alex Park. Matthew Rao. Jordan Siegel. Darshini Shankar. Lily Shukla. Mindy Sim. Mia Sosa. Zachary Spurgeon. Gari Srinath. Daniel Tian. Sneha Vasishtha. Jingyu Xiao. Eric Yang. Grace Yang. Matthew Yang. Arthur Yeah. Jennifer Sao. And Harry Sang. Now, I'm going to be honest with you. We had this tricky thing where we had people that RSVP'd for tonight and other night. I want to make sure I didn't forget anybody. Is anybody here that did not have their name called? Hope and I was very careful.
We will now take a short pause, so that you guys, if you would like to go home and study, then you can.
I would just like to comment that there's enough brain power in this room right now to run a large city. Congratulations, everybody.
Okay, we will now proceed with the next part of our meeting, which is public comment. You should have received a card like this if you signed up, and on the back, I do want to bring your attention to a couple of these things. C is that participants must be recognized by the presiding officer, that's myself, and must preface their comments with an announcement of their name and group affiliation, if applicable. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the board. No person may address or question individual board members, and as a general matter, the school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during public comment, but will take them under advisement. So we do have one public comment speaker tonight, Maureen Morgan. If you'd please come up to the stand.
I'm Maureen Morgan. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on a presentation given at last month's board meeting. So it shed some light on why some ACT scores have been the lowest in 30 years. And is the term "dumbing down" applicable? We know that math has been upended with new methods, and history books are being rewritten, but now it appears the U.S. Department of Education is using their new research to flip another core course, class, which is world language. So it was reported last month, the Carmel High School World Language Program is going to follow the Acquired Language Hypothesis by Steven Krashen, essentially meaning, we're going to teach our high school students a second language using the model of how our children learn a first language. So even though high school students are already well-educated on sentence structure and verb conjugation, we're going to pretend that they don't know any of those principles in teaching them a second language. Teaching will begin with simple words, then phrases, then sentences, as children learn. And there will be no focus on grammar, or not as much focus on grammar or memorizing vocabulary words, because children don't learn that way. The teachers do 90% of the speaking in class, since children must feel comfortable before attempting to speak, and the focus will shift to enjoy the reading. So it was also shared that since mistakes from children, and we don't, we expect mistakes from children, and we don't correct their letters to grammar, so that might inhibit them, so teachers are going to shift away from correcting students' grammar or testing proficiency. Although I'd like to note, the half, half of the meetings every month are given awards for testing, so I, I would think the school district would really value testing for proficiency. And let's address brain development. As a health professional, I've studied the different areas of the brain that develop at different ages, but it only takes common sense to know that a three-year-old doesn't have a brain matured in the learning and reasoning centers, whereas a 17-year-old can be taught at a higher level. Their discernment in language centers have been fine-tuned for years. So add some study time to that, and their comprehension well exceeds the capability of a child's learning. So common sense says this hypothesis does not hold water. So if we're training students to live and work abroad, how are they going to fit into society or compete in the marketplace with improper grammar? My three-year-old grandson, he gets away with the communication. Me go there, you know, me do it, come to my, come to my house. But do we want to send out our Carmel students speaking as toddlers across the world? That's how they're going to become to be recognized if we continue on these absurd paths. So the U.S. Department of Education has an agenda that does not prioritize academic excellence. I don't expect to change minds tonight, but I do find it important to make it public record that citizens are questioning where common sense has gone in developing the teaching doctrines used in education today, and have school districts such as Carmel been hoodwinked, or are they willing party, to follow priorities other than offering knowledge to students at their highest capabilities? We must get back to including common sense when establishing academic excellence in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will now move on to consent. May I have a motion to approve consent items, including personnel, claims, payroll, approval of gift applications, which include a donated Yamaha Alto saxophone to the Carmel Middle School Performing Arts Department. Patrons of Creekside donated $3,820 and $2,070 to the Performing Arts Department. An anonymous donor gifted two slightly-used wheelchairs to Carmel High School. Craig Johnson of Parkside Animal Hospital donated $2,400 to the Carmel High School Unified Cheer, and the Indiana Association of Chinese Americans donated $2,000 to the Carmel High School Advancement of Asian Americans and Arts and Athletics Student Club. We also have minutes from the September 12th workshop and minutes from the September 27th regular session. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We will now move on to our action item for tonight. My different paper. At this time, the board will consider adopting a resolution authorizing the issuance of the 2022 General Obligation Bonds. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is, these projects actually started in, in 2020, and, and on July 27th of 2020, and again in August 24th of 2020, the board adopted a resolution determining that it needed existed for the 2123 facility project. And this financing was a part of that public hearing. And so this will be the third and, and final bond issue relative to these projects. And so we would recommend your adoption of the attached resolution.
May I have a motion to authorize the issuance of the General Obligation Bond Series 2022? Thank you, Leila. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Anything for discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We will now move on to a public hearing. At this time, I do need a motion to suspend the regular board meeting and open a public hearing regarding the appropriation of proceeds of the General Obligation Bond Series 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the regular board meeting signify by saying aye. Aye. Meeting suspended. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, this hearing is in regard to appropriating proceeds from the bond sale that you just approved. And in order to be able to actually use the money, the funds have to be appropriated. And so this is an opportunity for any public comment with regard to that.
At this time, I will offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding this plan. Since there are no comments from members of the public, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye. Aye. Public hearing closes. We will resume our regular board meeting. We now have another action item to adopt the appropriation resolution of the General Obligation Bond Series 2022. Mr. McMichael.
Yes, having conducted the hearing relative to this appropriation resolution, we'd now recommend that you approve the resolution. This will then be forwarded to the, to the state for their approval once the, the bonds are sold.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the appropriation resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All, any discussion? Yes.
Roger, Roger. So I know at the beginning, it talks about a whole list of projects that we approved in the past, but some of those have already been done. Is that correct?
Yes, most of them actually are, they're in the process, they're either finished, or in some cases, like the Performing Arts Project and the Naterium, they're under construction now.
So this is just appropriation of the last pieces?
Yes.
Not funds, funds. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of adopting the appropriation resolution, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We now have the 2023-2024 Program of Studies Course Changes. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. At our last meeting, I brought to you the proposed course changes for the Program of Studies for the 23-24 school year for Carmel High School. We are proposing several new courses and some modifications of other courses, and our recommendation is for you to approve the proposed changes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Program of Studies Course Changes? Second.
Second.
Discussion? I just want to say I was unable to be at the last meeting, that I think it is so exciting that we're adding criminal justice and another, and a welding capstone to our high school portfolio. As having a high school student, the options are completely and utterly endless. So I think that's such a fantastic opportunity for our students. So I love seeing these come across. Any other board questions or comments?
Well, I'll just make another comment about our capstone program. Two of my college students are working on capstone projects, and I'm excited, and well, actually, I guess excited, thrilled, fortunate, that they've had this experience, their capstone projects that they worked on in high school, and they feel extremely comfortable at the college level pursuing these, these... pursuing these, these rigorous courses and having the skill set to just navigate pretty easily on these newer capstone projects. So that's pretty amazing.
And, and the capstone projects really give the students that real-world experiences in high school, and it is a great opportunity for our kids as we're expanding those capstones.
Any other board questions or comments? May, all those in favor of approving those Program of Course Changes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We now have a series of change orders. Do we want to take these together? Do I have a motion to take change order 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5 for the Hartman Baseball Complex, Educational Services Center, and the Carmel Elementary?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McMichael?
These are essentially closeout change orders for these particular contractors.
Any more discussion?
I mean, I guess I'll make the same comment that I made last time, but you, you already said it. These are closeout orders. It's nice to see the work being done and the finished up and the small amount of usually credits coming back for unused allowances.
We love it when we save money.
That's right.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of approving change orders 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Approved. We will now go to the adoption of bylaws. Are these ones that we're taking together? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the adoption of bylaw of 7.6, 7.7, 7.8, 7.9, 7.10, 7.11, 7.12, 7.13, and 7.14? Dr. Dudley, do you have anything to add?
Oh.
Need a motion?
Thank you. I was too busy focusing on counting.
I move that we take action items 7.6 through 7.14 in one motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anything? Oh, okay.
Back to you.
Okay. So the Policy Committee has, they've reviewed all of the board bylaws, and this is the first batch that we're bringing to you. The reason we're bringing so many and in, bringing them together is the changes in here were very minimal. They were more on formatting or just word choice of making sure that the wording, where it said, rather than Carmel Clay Schools, we said CCS, instead of School Board, we said Board. So it's very minimal changes, does not change the policies whatsoever, but just more of the formatting.
And this was discussed at last month's meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments around the board? All those, all those in favor of approving bylaw 7.7 to 7.4, please signify by saying aye. 7.6, that's why we're team. Thank you for keeping me. Okay, 7.6 to 7.14, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We will now move on to our discussion items, starting with the Carmel Clay School Board norms, and that is with me. So I just got kicked out. Just one second. There we go. So one of the things as a new school board member, and I wanted to do as president, was kind of have a document that really works together with our bylaws and code of ethics to kind of talk about some of the things that we do as a board. So the purpose of the document is really to provide governing expectations and consistency for the conduct of the Carmel Clay School Board. This document supplements our policies and bylaws, which provide a code of ethics, structure, operating guidelines, general meeting parameters, and our governing board's primary roles and responsibilities. So I would, I have shared that with you. I would like to bring that up for discussion tonight. I would love to kind of get your feedback, and then this is something that would be brought up for a vote at a next board meeting. This is similar type of document to our communication expectations, our legislative letter, some of those other documents that kind of work in relation with our board policies and everything. So tonight, what I was going to do was just kind of go through the different headings with this document, and elicit feedback for you guys, any changes I'll make and for that to bring brought back for board vote at a later time. So the first section we have is the about. This section really talks about how the board consists of five elected school board members who serve four-year terms, and how we work directly with, hire, and evaluate the superintendent. It talks about how we set the vision and goals, we adopt policy, adopt and oversee the annual budget, work with the superintendent to manage collective bargaining, and work with the superintendent to develop relationships with and be a resource for legislators. Again, the purpose of this document is really just to be a supplemental to our policy and bylaws. And the document then goes over our guiding principles, our mission and our vision. Any questions or comments or suggestions for that section, the about section? Okay. The next area is general board conduct. So the Carmel Clay School Board members will strive to provide an excellent public education that meets the needs of all students in our district. The excellence we expect is accomplishment, accomplished in partnership with our students, parents, teachers, administrators, nonlicensed staff, and community members. As a board, we will model with each other the leadership and relationships we seek to build with others, how we run meetings and interact with each other. Our superintendent, district staff, and the community send clear signals about how we value our mission and vision for the Carmel Clay School District. Collaborative relationships built on trust, respect, and accountability will build credibility and inspire confidence in our leadership, vision, and community. Any questions about the general board conduct section? Okay. The next section really kind of goes over, and I promise I'm not going to read all of this to you guys, the roles of a school board and a superintendent. So it talks about how the role of a school board is to be a trustee of public education and protect, conserve, and advance its progress. And the role of a superintendent is to lead the district operations, implement board policies and decisions. We recognize that the superintendent is our chief executive officer and expect recommendations, proposals, and suggestions on matters. And as a board, our interactions will be facilitated through the office of the superintendent. The board recognizes that only the board has a whole, as a whole, has power, and that no individual board members have authority or power independently. We will focus on strategic leadership rather than administrative details, and observe a clear distinction between board and superintendent responsibilities, and give directions throughout. This is one area about administrative details. Louise, I think you had a question on that.
Yeah. Can we just give a little more detail on what we mean when we say the board will focus on strategic leadership rather than administrative details? What do administrative details look like? Just, I think it would be beneficial for the public and potential school board members to understand what that means.
So like listing maybe some examples, like day-to-day operations, hiring of, you know, those sorts of individual decisions before they're brought to the board member? Maybe listing some examples?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Leila, you were thinking, were you?
Well, I was. Maybe even including like administrative responsibilities rather than just details, because there are quite a few administrative guidelines.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Just so you differentiate between strategic leadership and administrative leadership.
Yeah, I think that's good. Okay. I like that. Okay.
Well, I mean, I think the example that ISBA uses is, we're in the balcony, and we're not down in the weeds. So, I mean, I think that's what you're trying to get, and we can probably work on a better way to spell that out.
And maybe too, I kind of, I have a list here that I can go through with you guys about maybe some of those specifics, and that might help too.
That would be helpful.
Okay. So the number one is that we make our decisions based on the available information in the best interest of all students. This obligation supersedes any conflicting loyalty a member may have to advocacy or interest groups, loyalty based upon membership of other boards or staff, and conflicts based on the personal interest of a board member. Two, we make every attempt to attend all board functions, including committee meetings, and remain informed of activities, programs, and incidents in the district with the board's purview. We respect and remain mindful of the different roles in the school system, including but not limited to school board, superintendent, administrators, teachers, and staff. We not publicly criticize an employee or another board member. We meet with district personnel after notifying the superintendent and attend staff meetings, staff trainings, and other administrative events upon invitation. While disagreements and split votes will occur, we accept responsibility for board decisions regardless of an individual vote, and we speak with one voice after decision has been made. We take no private or public actions that will compromise the district, and participate when possible in opportunities that provide professional growth and commit to continuous improvement through annual evaluation. Any comments or suggestions or changes? The next thing is, we talk about meeting protocols. We talk about agenda meetings, how the board president and superintendent will ensure that agenda is appropriately balanced for time, and that agenda meetings usually occur the week prior. The superintendent and board president will attend with a second board member rotating in attendance. As general practice, we will endeavor to refrain from voting on a new item in the same meeting in which the item is presented, and items would be addressed in subsequent meetings through a planned agenda item, unless the board chair or superintendent determine that it would be detrimental to delay. As a best practice, when conducting board meetings and work sessions, we will strive to engage in meaningful, professional, and focused open discussion. We use parliamentary authority using Robert's Rules of Order newly revised. We invite input from all board members. We be, we are respectful of everyone's thoughts and ideas, and allow an opportunity for board member input. We articulate clearly and concisely on topic so all can be heard. We express our opinions and beliefs about issues. Board discussions will be open, and candor is quite encouraged. Honest disagreements are legitimate and have an appropriate place on the board. However, board members will respect one another's opinions and will not criticize one another in an inappropriate manner. We focus on issues rather than response, than personalities. We come prepared. We remain on topic, and refrain from the use of cellphones during board meetings. So again, these are really things that are written in our bylaws. It's things that we're already doing, but this is really just a document where it's kind of, kind of all laid out there for board members currently, for board members in the future, and also for our community. So I appreciate all of you listening to board member 101 as we are going through this. Any questions or comments about this section? The next area is officers, appointments, and committees. We talk about how a slate of officers is presented at our reorganizational meeting in January. Prior to this, the board president typically works with individual members to see if they are interested in a change or an appointment. And at that reorganization meeting, any board member is welcome to bring forth a slate of candidates for vote. The offices of board president and vice president have traditionally held other responsibilities within the board before serving in those two capacities, and due to the complexity of those offices, it is best practice that board president and vice president have served at least two years of service. And then also that the Carmel Clay School Board does not utilize board committees. Yes?
The only suggestion I have in this area is, do you, do we want to add any verbiage around the VP proxying for the president when the president's out?
I thought about that, but that's actually in the bylaw, so it would just be duplication.
Okay, okay.
And I talk about communications in a minute, and that's kind of the other thing that usually happens too. But, so, I was trying not to duplicate, because this is already so long. Policy, this is a superintendent committee under Dr. Amy Dudley's direction. At our January reorg meeting, we appoint two school board members to serve in this capacity. It's used to review policies, work with legal counsel, and prepare for a public and board presentation, and this policy committee has no decision-making authority. Carmel Parks Appointment, we appoint and vote for one school board member to serve in this capacity. While flexible, that appointment is usually for two years, and they do have voting rights on the Parks Board. This partnership allows us to work closely with the Parks in areas like after-school programming, ESC, use of district buildings and facilities, and matters of interest. We also appoint a board member to serve on the Carmel Redevelopment Commission. Again, this appointment is usually for two years. This member does not have voting privileges on the Redevelopment Commission, and while it is nonvoting, we appreciate the opportunity to be aware of and share with the commission when projects may affect the district. And then also a legislative liaison. This appointment is determined in July to correlate with the legislative session, and we traditionally have had one to two members serve in this capacity. The purpose of this position is to work with our state and congressional legislators for the purpose of being a credible resource on the matters related to lifelong learning, offering support to develop initiatives to prove on what the state's constitution describes as our quote "general and uniform system of common schools," and offer support to help minimize unintended negative financial or organizational consequences. Each year, the legislative liaison will also present to the board to discuss and vote on district legislative priorities, and an annual document or letter that would be shared with our legislators. Any thoughts or comments on that section? Good. I've done a good job so far. Communications. Communication expectations, we adapt, adopt, we develop and adapt an annual review, the communication expectations. These guidelines are how we work together. Those are already available on our website to view of how we communicate with the board between the superintendent. Emails. The board utilizes a group email to receive and respond to questions or concerns. The board and our superintendent are a team, and we ensure that all see the same information. Any email that is sent to one individual is shared with the group for transparency. As the board spokesperson, the board president or their designee will be the primary response communicator for board email responses. If an individual board member receives an inquiry from a CCS staff member or stakeholders, those are directed to the superintendent, and other board members will be notified, and the superintendent will be, keep the board informed of any subsequent follow-up. Any question on, or on the communications? And finally, we're almost done, I promise, is professional development. New board member onboarding is done under the direction of the board president and the superintendent. The board will typically hold one monthly workshop session to educate the board. We have a semi-annual board advance. Other people call them board retreats, but Dr. B. says we never go backwards. So we like to call them advances. We typically have these twice a year, and depending on the topic, this can be an open-door meeting or an executive session. And then last but not least, the Carmel Clay School Board is a member and participant of the Indiana School Board Association. We are encouraged to attend meetings. We also utilize our services for board member training, professional development, and we have regularly presented at conferences. Through ISBA, we also have access to the National School Board Association and the Consortium of State School Board Association events and publications. So that is all. Any questions or comments on that last section? Okay.
No, I have an overall comment.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, because I think this is very comprehensive, and it, it brings together several different resources that we have in one place to really support board function. So that's fantastic. My question, or maybe a comment, and I didn't think about this until I was listening. We talk a lot about "we." Do we want to change that to "the board" instead of "we"? I mean, there's, it's really just kind of some wordsmithing.
I think that's a good idea.
So we might want to just do another once-through to look at grammar, making it first person versus third person, you know, that type of thing. So that's just my only comment there.
No, appreciated. Mike?
I, I'd like to echo Leila's, Leila's comments about thanking you for this effort. I think it will become a valuable tool going forward. When I came on the board, the communication expectations were already on. I found that a very helpful document, and as we look at it every year, every couple of years, obviously, things get tweaked. And then, you know, in my, on my tenure in the board, we came up with the guiding principles, which, again, that's something that we as a board look at, you know, as we prepare for every meeting and every decision. So I think this is a helpful document, and I appreciate all the time and effort that you put into getting us this first draft. So thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a very helpful document, and I think future board members will find it. So I also look forward to hearing more information about how we want to evolve our onboarding process for new members too. So I know you're looking at that, and, you know, always let us know how we can support.
Yeah, no, I appreciate those comments. I think this is really helpful, because a lot of times we get asked questions of, you know, why do you do that? Not only from board members, but from the community. And we have, we'll have this public document available so that they can kind of see that. And it does play perfectly into the onboarding, so we're actually working on that right now. And so one of the things is, is that we will have two or maybe three new school board members come January, and so already preparing for that transition of not only the board norms, but really that onboarding happens on November 9th. So as soon as they're elected, being able to bring them in and get them up to speed, because as of that January day when they are sworn in, they're voting board members. So we want to make sure that we give them all the tools and resources that we can. So that is something that's already being worked on. So, great question. Anything else? We talk about you a lot in this document. Do you have any thoughts?
No. No, I really appreciate you going through, you know, the work here to set up those norms. I think it will be helpful as we onboard new board members. We actually have two superintendent interns back here, Principal Lila J. and Assistant Principal Emily Supergan, who are working on a project to actually create a handbook for new school board members. So this will fit real nicely into that document. And so I think it's a really, a really good baseline information. And anytime, you know, people always talk about culture and norms, and it's kind of the way we do things around here. And I think it's a really good idea to articulate that in such a good, clean fashion. And I think that'll be very valuable to us as we move forward. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate you guys letting me. Oh, go ahead.
That just reminded me, as you were talking about earlier, I think it's important that the board realizes that it sets the tone of the board as how we interact with each other, we're models to the citizens, and about that, you know, how we treat each other is important. And that we need to be respectful to each other, and as you read through there, we may not always agree, but that once a decision's made, that that's the decision, and we go forward together.
No, and that's some of the things I loved. That's why I wanted to incorporate those things, because we've had some incredible experience on the Carmel Clay School Board. And so some, and then coming on to it, you know, some of those great things that you guys have taught me have been really invaluable to me. Especially, I love the one where, you know, we'll vote differently on a thing, but then afterwards, you know, we move forward. That's what's best for the district, and I think that's such a wonderful thing that we do. And so I definitely, like, appreciate you guys letting me go through this tonight to correlate this. I always knew I wanted like a handbook of sorts, but I didn't know what it was called until recently. That's called Board Norms, which is very common. School boards across the country have this. So I'm excited to add this to our documentation. So I will bring this back. I'll make those edits that we talked about. I will bring this back at our next regular session, school board meeting for a vote. And once it's approved, it will be available on our website and everything for everyone's to view. So thank you for your time.
So will it be on the page when you navigate to board, and then you click there, it'll just be listed?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's where our communication expectations are, so it'll be right there for everyone to see too.
Perfect. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Anything else? Okay, I'm moving on. Thank you, guys. We will now move on. I lost my paper. School board dates. And that's me too. So as we prepare for our, for January, which is crazy that we're already looking towards 2023, we want to make sure that we got our dates out for next year's school board meetings. Is there any questions for those dates? We did try really hard to make sure that there wasn't any conflict with major holidays. Any school events, not the first day of school, fall break, spring break, all of those good things? Anything that you guys would like to add to that? And then we'll bring that back at a future meeting also.
No, I think you did a really good job. I have a calendar app, and I went through, I think it's 24 most common religious holidays, and these don't interfere. So.
Wonderful.
We're good.
Wonderful. We do traditionally have our board meetings on Mondays. There was a couple instances where that didn't work, and so we moved it to Tuesday. Or it kind of fell upon, you know, like the day after spring breaks, those sorts of things where, you know, usually we like to recharge a little bit before back. And so we did make those changes. So if all of that looks good, we will bring that forth. We will bring that back next month for a vote. And now on to reports. Dr. O'Stryke?
Good evening, President Browning, Dr. Bearsford, and members of the board. I'm proud to be here this evening to present my Human Resources Board Report on addressing the teacher shortage. And tonight, I'm going to focus on two areas. I've provided comprehensive reviews in the past. But this evening, I'm going to focus on student teachers and then district partnerships. And no matter where you consume your news, there is a consensus that there is a teacher shortage in Indiana. And here in Carmel Clay Schools, while we are extremely fortunate to garner the interest from teachers all over the state and beyond to want to come to Carmel and teach, it's very important that we're extremely proactive with our recruiting. And tonight, I'm going to share a couple of those pieces with you. The other thing I wanted to share is if you look at the IDOE Job Board. Currently, this evening, before the meeting, I checked, there was 1,596 teacher openings for the state of Indiana. Now, while I believe that that number is not accurate, and that number is much lower, there's still a significant amount of teaching openings that are in the state currently. Back in mid-July, that number was a little over 2,300. And those would have been much more accurate as school districts were hiring in preparation for the start of the school year. So let's focus first on student teachers. And this has been an area that has been very important to us this school year. And so with recruiting student teachers, we believe that this is a very proactive strategy to attract future teachers to Carmel Clay Schools. One of the things that we see is many of the student teachers in Carmel and in all districts across the state of Indiana, they don't even hit the job market. And they don't hit the job market because they student teach, they do a great job. Student teaching is the absolute best job interview that a future teacher can have, because you can see them in the classroom. You know if they come on time. You know how they collaborate with their peers. You know their instruction. And so there's a lot. It's a job, a job interview over a six-week, a 10-week period or more. So it's a great interview that you have. But what's happening across the state is our student teachers are going to districts. They're doing a great job. And because there's such a need across the state for teachers, is that they just offer them a teaching position right off the bat, and they don't even hit the job market, because they get gobbled up right away. So that's why this is an important proactive strategy to try to bring as many student teachers to Carmel Clay Schools that we can. Now, student teaching today is not how it was when Dr. Dudley, Mr. McMichael, Dr. Bearsford, and myself were student teachers. Back in the day, we were thrown in. The teacher would head out somewhere, and it was a sink-or-swim method and model. It's no longer like that. It's more of a collaboration, a partnership between the cooperating teacher and the student teacher. It's really an extra pair of hands in that classroom that can assist the teacher. The teacher learns, the student teacher learns from that mentor and cooperating teacher. So it's really a much better model today than it was when we were going through that. In addition, universities are starting to hold student teaching recruitment fairs. And so back in late September, we went down to IU Bloomington. Mrs. Jay, who's in the audience, joined me along with Mrs. Roberts Leonard and Mr. Pelich. And we went down to recruit specifically student teachers. We were overwhelmed by all of the student teachers that stopped by Carmel Clay Schools booth. They had, I believe, close to 90 that day that we heard from Bloomington. And we had 75 student teachers that specifically stopped by Carmel Clay Schools booth to learn more information about student teaching in Carmel. I can also tell you that the districts that were to our left and to our right certainly benefited from that because all the students were funneled in our direction. And there were over 30 school districts that participated in the student teaching recruitment fair. So as long as universities are going to have student teaching recruitment fairs, you will find Carmel Clay Schools at those dates and those locations. The other piece I wanted to share is in the agreements, we have agreements with universities when they student teach. Many of them recently have opened up the opportunity for student teachers to get paid as substitute teachers when their cooperating teacher is out. And so we enacted that this year because we want to continue to attract student teachers. And if we're the only district that's not paying them when their cooperating teacher is out, then we're going to fall behind, and we don't want to fall behind. I will tell you, there are stipulations to that. I can assure you, Mr. Kerschner is okay despite his sign falling down there. But there are stipulations and guidelines that we follow with paying them. There's, most of the universities, it's up to five days. It has to be pre-arranged, so on and so forth. So it's not like they're getting paid throughout their whole student teaching. But we want to certainly offer that because other districts in our area are also doing that. Let's look at our, let's take a look at our student teaching numbers throughout the year. So you can see in 1819, we had 54. We dipped the next year. Something happened where we didn't have school for about three months to end the school year. So a lot of those student teachers that we had, though, they stopped or they didn't complete their student teaching requirements. However, with talking with principals, we increased that immediately, starting with the next year on into last year. We had 78. And then currently, we have 43, and certainly we'll see that number increase throughout the school year. And by the response we received at IU Bloomington, I can assure you for next year, that number will more than likely rise significantly. I also want to share, we're able to have student teachers, thanks to our current wonderful Carmel Clay teachers that we have. Because they have to agree to serve as a mentor teacher or cooperating teacher. The relationship that we have with our Carmel Teachers Association is fantastic. They are wonderful. And without their cooperation and their assistance, we would not be able to do this. So there's a lot of wins when we have student teachers. Our students benefit. Our teachers benefit. Our student teachers certainly benefit. And then our future recruitment efforts are also pay dividends when we do this. There's Mr. Williams. He's actually an instructional assistant at Carmel Elementary School, and he is going to be a future student teacher. That's why I put his picture up there. And so, and that's another area of recruitment, is our current instructional assistants, but we're not going to go into that this evening. So we're doing quite a bit. So the next piece, yes, Mrs. Fannenberg?
On our student teachers, what is the capacity that we have for student teachers?
Well, we have a little over 1,000 teachers total in the school district. And so really, the capacity, it could be, you know, it's really, it's endless. However, we do, there are guidelines that the principals have in place. You know, you only can have so many student teachers in a certain year period, and so on and so forth. But our capacity, we could take easily double that, no problem. Yep, thank you. Great question. All right, moving on to district partnerships with universities. I'm very excited about the next pieces I'm going to share with you this evening. And so what we're also doing is reaching out to our local universities and to see where can we partner that it'll be a win-win for the university and a win for Carmel Clay Schools. And so the first partnership that just started not too long ago was with Butler University and their special education teaching program and their courses. And with Professor Meyer from Butler University, she brings her special education students to Prairie Trace and Clay Middle School. And they come and have different field experiences. They shadow teachers. They may help out in the classroom at times. And then they have their own class here in Carmel, in the school buildings. And so that's a way where they can maximize their time with field experiences and then hosting their class. So that's a win-win. And so that just started. We're very excited about that partnership, and we think it's going to go places. So wanted to share that. The other one we're working on right now that we're hopefully in the final stages of getting something going is with Clay Center Elementary School and Butler University's elementary teaching program. We hope to have them come in a similar fashion for different field experiences. We also want them to host courses, classes at our schools if they're interested. And then we do feel that both of these programs will be a springboard for future student teachers and future teachers. And so we're excited about both of those partnerships, that one that's already going on, and then another that's in the works. In addition, we've been in conversation with Ball State. And with Ball State, they have an outstanding special education teacher college. And you're hearing special education quite a bit right now. That is where we're seeing the teacher shortage being impacted the most. So if we're seeing that we're getting less and less candidates for those special education teaching positions, that's where we want to focus, and that's what we've been doing right now. And so we are, we want to do something very similar that we're doing with the Butler program. But we have the capacity and the ceiling with Ball State is even higher because of the number of special education students that they have at Ball State. And additionally, we're looking at those teachers, those students at Ball State. They are focused on getting a severe and also a moderate special education teaching license so they can work with our students who need the most assistance. And so we're very excited about that, because with that license, they can teach those moderate and severe special needs that some of our students have. So we're excited about this too. We're hoping that this will kick off next semester. And then we hope to spread to additional buildings throughout the school district. In the Ball State partnership, we also have Stephanie Fairchild, our Director of Special Services, who's plugged into this. And she's very excited about the possibility too. So the two pictures you see right here are from our Butler partnership. You see our former Teacher of the Year, Amanda Dillon, who's up there. So she hosted some of the Butler students. And then on the right, you have Principal Todd Crosby at Clay, who's pausing his day for a quick photo op. And he also spoke with our students at Butler University. So we're very fortunate here in Carmel. We are a destination district. We continue to get outstanding candidates throughout the year. However, we can, we need to be proactive. We need to continue to go out. And we need to continue to bring in great candidates for our principals so that we can continue to have wonderful teachers for our students here in Carmel. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board, Louise?
Can you speak to the idea of having a referral incentive program for teachers that refer people who get hired within the district?
Yes, so currently, excuse me.
I didn't mean to get you choked up.
Choked me out there. We receive referrals all the time from our teachers. Hannah's still choked up here. We receive referrals all the time, and I don't get choked up very often. However, we don't have anything formal in place at this time. That is something certainly we could discuss with our Teachers Association in the future. But I do love referrals from our teachers, because oftentimes, they will send us someone. I will sit down and interview. Principals will sit down and interview, and oftentimes, they're top-notch. So that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
I have a question. I know the answer, but for the general public. Do these people who come into our buildings go through the same background checks and different things that we would expect of anyone who's teaching our students?
100%. Yes. Yes. They're all background-checked.
Any other board questions?
Do we use our subs as a way to build our funnel? What do we do there?
And that's, and that's why we always need subs, because absolutely, it's cyclical, right? So our substitute teachers then become our maternity leave teachers and our instructional assistants and our permanent subs. And then they become our teachers, and so it is a cycle. And that's why we're always looking for substitute teachers. So if you're out there watching this right now, please apply to become a substitute teacher. But absolutely, it happens all the time.
And have we done research to ensure that our sub wages are competitive?
Yes, so we just had a meeting about that today, and we had data that we looked at from all of the surrounding areas. With the surrounding areas, we are competitive amongst other school districts. But there's certainly a lot more information to take into consideration, given the current climate, you know, with regards to inflation and other factors.
And I want to say a heartfelt thank you to all the administrators that sub for us too, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And then the last thing I will add is that regarding substitute teachers, it's also our hope that with the students who are coming into our buildings that have classes or are doing field experiences, because they have their background check, all they need to do is apply for their substitute teaching license. And then with those 30 college credits, they can also, when they have breaks, because their breaks are quite a bit longer, whether it's winter break or spring break or their fall breaks, they can come to Carmel. it's winter break or spring break or their fall breaks, they can come to Carmel and they can student, or they can substitute teach with that background check. So hopefully, we're also funneling these current programs into increased substitute teachers.
And is that shared with them when they are in this program?
Yes.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Dr. O.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our monthly financial update. Mr. McMichael.
So, this is through September, and I'll start with the education and referendum and rainy day fund. You can see, this was a three-pay month in September, so you'll notice that our cash balance dropped significantly, which we would have anticipated, did anticipate. And so, we're at five point, almost 5.5 million, and as you know, that balance will continue to go down until we start receiving referendum funds. Most of, most of these monies are used for salaries, and so... Salaries, salaries every two weeks, and, and we only receive referendum funds roughly twice a year. So if we compare that to last year, in September, it was 3.8 million. We are higher than that this year, but that's primarily because we have more funds in our rainy day fund this year as compared to last year. Going to the operations fund, this fund's actually in a negative balance at this point, which isn't all that unusual. It's compared, $580,000. And then, last year, we were, had a balance, a positive balance of $301,000. So again, this fund is not as reliable in terms of comparing because of the nature of the expenses out of here, and, and there are, unlike the, the education fund, the referendum fund, the operations fund has a number of expenses besides salary and benefits. Then going to the rainy day fund, as I alluded to, we have 2.3 million in the rainy day fund. Last year, in September, we actually had a slight negative balance. So, that, as I said, that's the principal difference in the, in the variation in the balances in the education and referendum fund. So with that, I'll respond to questions if you have any.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now move on to board member reports, legislative update. Mrs. Bannenberg?
Thank you, Katie. I'm going to, there it is, okay. I'm not going to run the slides. That's not my skill set. So, we just going to start? Okay, great. So, our update, next. There it is. Okay, next. So the big theme of the Indiana School Board Association's conference in October, which several of us were able to attend, October 2nd through the 4th, was public schools work, and they do. And some of the highlights of the conference, we had our delegate assembly, we had two great keynote speakers, one each day, Safe and Sound Schools, Michelle Gay, Tell Me Something Good from Clint Swindoll, CCS Presented, which was fantastic, on school board safety, school board meeting, safety procedures. And then there were some thoughts and ideas from different sessions that I attended that I wanted to share with us as well. Next. So in the delegate assembly, there were the, we approved as a legislative liaison in the delegate for ISBA for our district. I was at the delegate assembly, and we approved the 2023 Legislative Foundational Statements. And they are extensive, take a second to read, I do want to highlight, which, they're very similar to our guiding principles, to be honest with you. But I want to also note, ISBA has a significant presence downtown, and they work directly with many legislators to promote public education and equitable funding in public education. And in their advocacy, they really do support empowering school board authority and ways to involve families and teachers to have supportive classrooms. And so, each one of these foundational statements really do embody what it is to be a strong school system. And ISBA advocates for over 270 school districts in the state of Indiana, and they've done a really good job over the past few years, really pushing their legislative relationship to ensure that our teachers and students have the funding they need to be as successful as they can. Next. So there are several legislative priorities that we approved at the delegate assembly. The first focuses on state budgeting and tuition support. A through F talk about very specific areas that they want to be sure that they engage in some type of tuition support. Most importantly, the base for tuition support, and then that complexity index, they're really trying to push having pre-kindergarten programming expansion across the state instead of just having it at a few local communities. Additional funding for English language learners, our special education category fund. So not only do we have federal funding, but also state funding to help support what we do in the classroom. Right now, there currently is not a teacher-mentor stipend, that was removed several years ago, and our teachers certainly would benefit. I know we have the mentor program here, but it would be great if there was some compensation and support for schools to continue to do that. And another big focus is the ADM count for early graduates. We want to be sure that if we're able to get them counted, we pass some legislation that will include our students. And we're promoting everybody getting as much education as they can, as early as they can, and getting all these AP credits. Well, when they graduate early, we still have a teacher that we are paying and not getting compensated for, I guess, the great work, that we are really doing a great job educating the students, and then not being able to compensate our teachers is counterintuitive. So we're working on that as well. Next. Here's a summary of all of the other priorities. One big component I want to share is that it's a long session, it is the budget session, and so a lot of the legislative priorities that here will focus on financing and some of the language, for example, the referendum issue, this is all clarifying language because it is very confusing on what is mandated that we have to state, and it's confusing for the voter when they read that. So we're trying to simplify and clarify what that language is. Very important to ISBA as well as Carmel Clay Schools, as we're supporting the mental health services that we're able to provide to our students. We're looking for additional funding and support for secured school safety grants. We're trying to have some additional reform on the A to F school accountability, because we now have this data dashboard that IDOE has for the district, so trying to transition to a better system to allow families to better understand how our schools are rated. And then there's some others, the stop-on violation and penalty enforcement for drivers who endanger our children. And once again, they have the school board member per diem procedures in there because, oddly enough, our school board member per diem is based on the Marion County, it's something in Marion County. I'm sorry, I have, I don't recall specifically, but it is not, we do not get to choose by, by individual communities, and we don't even get to have any say as school boards. It is really done by the common council in Marion County.
That's it?
Yes, which doesn't make a lot of sense to most people.
It's like their city council, so to speak, chooses what school board members across the state get paid.
Yes, which seems quite odd, but at any rate. So, next slide. So the first keynote speaker was Michelle Gay, and Michelle's a mother and educator and a, the co-founder of Safe and Sound Schools. And she, her interest in, in Safe and Sound Schools happened unfortunately following the death of her child during, oh, thank you, yes. During Sandy Hook, and she, her, it was very moving, and it was almost very difficult to listen to at times, her explaining her emotions that day. But the one piece that I took from, of the many, the one piece I took from her, her discussion was this rethinking school safety together, and this comprehensive framework. And what struck me best, I suppose, is that our school system is working in this framework. And we have, you know, extensive mental and behavioral health that we are working on to support our students. The health and wellness of not only our students is a focus, but our staff and our community is important. Our physical safety and security, David Woodward and his team have worked very well, and, oh, yes, thank you. Who's, who, yes, and Adam Miller, the, you know, with the Carmel Police Department and our SROs have really developed a, a strong program that is consistent throughout all of Carmel Clay. We've been trying to really build our culture and climate and community with, you know, basically, character counts and kindness matters. And we have the Stop It app, and there are several layers to what we are doing in our school system for having our safe schools. Leadership, law, and policy. We've got a team that's working on that, and operations and emergency management, that is extremely comprehensive, and we've learned about that as board members, and I know some of our community have learned about various levels of the school safety and the layers in school safety for the classes that David Woodward is teaching. So I found that we're doing what Safe and Sound Schools really says is the, is the right thing. So the framework is what we're practicing, and so I just wanted to share that, great job, team, thank you for all you're doing to keep our kids and our community safe. Next. Clint Swindoll was a hoot. He's from Verbalocity. I'm not sure if anybody else was able to attend. I think Dr. Beresford was, and it was all about personal engagement, personnel engagement in a post-pandemic world. And you talked about our employees, and we've got the, oh, yeah, employees that are so excited whenever you ask them or give them a task, and then you've got the, oh, no, you know, you know, you walk into the room and there's that person. You don't want to be that guy, but there's always that person who just always finds, you know, the dark gray skies. And then, there's the majority of people in the middle, they, yeah, 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 they're fine. Now, what he was pointing out is if you bounce between the, oh, yeah, and oh, no, and you keep bouncing between, you really lose your ability to control what impacts your life. And as a leader, we really should not be bouncing around. It's really important to provide consistency. So as board members, as administrative leaders, as teachers, being very consistent in leading and pulling the emotion out of our work, and really focusing on positive personal leadership. Next. I loved this statement, and I wanted to be sure that I shared it with everybody. Every day you show up to work, you either, you are either adding to or taking away from the culture of your corporation. There is no middle ground. And he was talking about this in relation to the, oh, yeah, great day, and the, oh, no, and then the people in the middle. Because you, and you tend to think the people in the middle, it's not a bad thing. What he's saying is, it's not a great thing either, because you're taking away. If you're not contributing, you're not, you're, you're taking away. You either are great or you're not. And, and the middle ground isn't really where we want to have most of our leadership. We want our leadership to be, oh, yeah. So, this just resonated with me, and I would say I'm not always that, oh, yeah, girl, but I will try harder. So, next. Some of the great things he pointed out for us to focus on, you know, he had a challenge, focus on the good stuff. So each and every time you see somebody, you know, instead of saying, how are you? And people say, oh, fine, start with, tell me something good. I've started doing this to my family and my husband, and I'm like, why? Like, because. Just tell me something good. I've heard enough it for the day, just tell me something good. And that's a great way to have a positive turn on maybe a rainy day. It helps change the culture of an organization, it helps overcome negativity, it's an easy icebreaker for people, and it really helps make something big happen. So changing the culture, and I know we've talked a lot about culture, and how do we have a positive culture, and we want to be sure that we have a, a culture that's inviting and a comfortable learning environment for our students and for the staff to grow. So, you know, this is an idea. The other part that he said, you know, two things, his two big takeaways, the second is celebrate it all. Just a reminder to celebrate. Celebrate all that is good in your workplace or in life, even if it is, you know, just every Friday, you just pick a day, pick a something, and just celebrate that, you know. The sun came up, you know, if that's all there is, there is something, you know, but find something to celebrate. And plan and be prepared. Don't say, oh, I'll do it, oh, I'll do it. Just, you know, have a, a specific time each week or something each month that either the school or the community or you do at home, but just pick something and be consistent. Be prepared, plan, and celebrate something. And his third was really just to challenge all of us, to have a tell me something good campaign, whether that's in our school district or at home, but just be happy, be joyful, and celebrate others. Next. I did want to point out, Carmel Clay Schools had an opportunity to present. I know we've presented in the past, and we've presented again, and so I was really excited to be part of the presentation team. We presented a safety session, school board safety procedures. Lieutenant Adam Miller from the Carmel Police Department, who's an SRO with Carmel Clay Schools, actually our lead SRO, presented with David Woodward, the Director of Student Services for Carmel Clay Schools. Katie contributed extensively as well, she's our president, obviously, and is our legislative liaison, and is a delegate for ISBA. I was invited to participate as well. It was very well-received. I would have to say, from all the sessions that I attended, it was most heavily attended, and several individuals stayed after to ask additional questions, and how do we manage our school boards, and what have we done in this post-pandemic situation? I was really pleased with how well Lieutenant Miller, Katie, and David really represented Carmel Clay Schools. They did a fantastic job. Dr. Beresford was also recognized at ISBA as the IAPSS Central District Five Chairperson for the Principals and Superintendents Association, and I was also recognized as ISBA's Region Five Director. And I think that might be our last page? Oh, no, there's one more. Okay, thoughts and ideas. Last but not least, something that I found very intriguing, it was, Purdue University has this Rising Scholar Program, and the key components of their program is that the students who are part of this Rising Scholars Program, they're socioeconomic, low socioeconomic students. And what they have in part of this program, every student is assigned an adult mentor, and that adult mentor helps them create a web of mentors. And through all of their research, and I think it's probably obvious, but we always like to support ideas with data, but they're thickly webbed, students were far more successful than those who weren't nearly as webbed. They had some other key components. If you're going to be part of the program, you had to be a participant in some of the, they call them institutional activities, but different activities at Purdue University, whether it was through, and this is, by the way, all for engineering, this is all engineering-based students. They were involved in social groups within the same field of engineering, and they had to have some type of relationship or connectedness, this webbing, and it directly correlated to the success of the students. And as I was thinking beyond what they were doing and how perhaps we can bring this full circle into our K through 12, I'm not sure how we promote our 21st Century Scholar Program with parents and students, but I think if, I would love to see us... but I think if, I would love to see us really push that. And then the students who have perhaps have filled out the application and are part of this 21st Scholar Program, if we promoted that mentorship program in that web of connectedness with those identified students to really help them be perhaps more successful K through 12, which will then pay dividends when they go off to college. So that was just an idea that I thought we might want to incorporate. But I was really fascinated on this program that they created at Purdue and what they were able to do with it and how it has benefited their students. And that is all I have to share. Sorry, my back was too, the whole time I was just looking this way.
Thank you so much, Leila, for this and all the work that you've done as a legislative liaison and also at ISBA. It's been wonderful. Questions from the board?
I don't know that I have a question. I did want to say thank you for representing us at the ISBA conference and doing that safety session that I heard really positive feedback from, from people that don't work for the district that I saw afterwards. So yes, it was well received. And then also I'm interested in hearing more about how we support the 21st Century Scholar Program and, you know, mentorship programs that we have or could be on the horizon for our schools because I don't think I've heard much about that. We visited Purdue a couple of months ago for my daughter, who's a senior, and we learned a little bit about their mentorship program. So it is a fantastic opportunity for students. If you're looking for or looking into attending Purdue, definitely research that program.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. We will now, last but not least, move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. B.
I think this has been a tell me something good night. I think, thank you for that legislative report, Leila. That was fantastic and a lot of good information there. And I too was very proud at the ISBA conference when, you know, Mrs. Gay went through that, you know, her experience there. But when she got to the end, and I've been a school safety guy since 1990 and the multiple layers that she presented were just spot on with, you know, what we know about that school safety right now. And so I took some, I had some pride about that and then I always, also, but she left you with, we gotta, we gotta stay on it. We gotta do more. And, but it was really, really impressive and it's one of those things that stick with you. That was really good. I was kind of looking back and it's like Dr. Ostrich really brought the juice tonight about how he's working this teacher shortage because those numbers are scary and they're going to get worse before they get better. And so I really appreciate all the effort that you're doing and the detail work that you're doing to make sure we get top candidates and get well-supported candidates. Especially those partnerships, I think will be wonderful, not only for Carmel Clay Schools, but also for other districts because they'll get a good experience here and can grow that way. And did you guys notice on his slides that Butler did say, go dogs in the little yellow box? And very ball state, it said chirp chirp. It's that attention to detail that really pushes it over the top. So I appreciate that. Also, Katie, appreciate the norms and getting that noted as we talked about. And also even our board dates. And I wanted to wish everyone a happy Diwali today because our Hindu friends are celebrating that tonight. Today is actually the first day. And then finally, well, next to last, I guess, you know, Roger goes through this and I know you guys sitting there were like, how many times are we going to talk about this bond issue? But all that's Indiana code. You have to do all those steps, you know, in that order to appropriately get, you know, get the money and get the money spent and that sort of thing. But Roger and his team put together, you know, this way to take care of our facilities and upgrade our facilities, a long-range facilities plan. And the financing that he's doing, that's just remarkable and really, really smart. So I really appreciate your work there. And you can kind of tell as you go around the district where, you know, where we've completed something and then where the next dirt pile's getting moved. In a district this size, there's always going to be some movement going on. But executing that at a very high level. And then who couldn't get excited about all of those National Merit Scholar Finals? And I know you guys are probably used to it here in Carmel. I've only been here four and a half years and it still, it makes my eyes go huge and I go wobbly because 56 National Merit Scholars is more merit scholars than a lot of states have. And for Carmel, for Carmel Clay Schools to have that many kids do that well, it is no, it's not an accident. It's hard, hard work. You know, I think sometimes attendance is, oh, there's just a whole bunch of really smart kids here, but those kids work extremely hard and their parents support them and they, and their staff supports them and it doesn't happen by accident. There's a lot of hard work involved with that. So anyhow, second year in a row with 56 National Merit Scholars. And I'm just going to shake my head all the way home. So anyhow, that brings me to the rest of my report. I thought I'd just tell you about my Super Saturday because it was a Super Saturday on the road for Dr. B. To begin with, I started the Ghosts and Goblins, which was a huge success. There was, the place was just packed with walkers and runners. And congratulations to the Carmel Education Foundation and all the participating runners and walkers. It's always such a fun day to see all the families get all dressed up and they come out together for some fun and fitness and all that to benefit the Carmel Education Fund, which is, does a lot of special things for the district. I was one of the costume judging, people in the costume judging team. So we had all these creative costumes and themes at every grade level and the kids were so cute. And then all of a sudden, you'd see these parents all decked out and you're like, now that dad had a commitment to his family because, you know, some of those were just, would be a little scary to put on. So, but yeah, it was pretty good. And I also like to give a big shout out to all the volunteers. You can't do that event without a ton of people helping. And, you know, the Ghosts and Goblins is just one of the best followed traditions we have around Carmel here. And I just think it's real special. So I hit that right first thing in the morning. I was judging costumes and I hopped in the car and I hustled down I-74 to Shelbyville to watch the Boys and Girls Semi-State Cross Country, which if you haven't heard, cross country is the greatest sport in the history of the world. And our, our boys won the semi-state and our girls got third. So both of them punched their tickets to the state finals this coming Saturday down in Terre Haute. Jasmine Kloppsted led the girls with an eighth place finish and she was working hard out there. And then the Boys Semi-State Champions were led by Cole Matheson, who's one of the fastest runners in the nation and he, he won. And so it's a big, it's always a big accomplishment to finish your season at the state meet. And I think these, these teams have one more big accomplishment they want to do on Saturday. So go Hounds. Next, I hopped back in my car and drove southwest through all the farmlands of Indiana to go to Seymour High School. And there I watched our girls soccer team just battle Center Grove for a trip to the state finals. The Hounds won one to zero, which, you know, that is really hard on your superintendent because my blood pressure was out of the average range, you know, most of the time. And I'll just tell you that there were many shots on goal by Center Grove at the end of that game. And all of a sudden, you'd see all these hands and then two arms would come up higher than all of those and catch the ball and it was our goalkeeper. And that girl, I'm going to get her a special Beresford's Hall of Fame Award or something. She kept, it was like, she would just come out of the crowd and catch that ball and save the day. So, so anyhow, they won and they'll be playing Noblesville, another Noblesville Carmel Clay final at IPUI on Saturday. So you can kind of get the idea where I'm going to be driving on Saturday. One I didn't get to attend was the Carmel High School Cheerleaders Qualified for State Competition. That's going to be in a couple of weeks here. They play second on Saturday to advance to the state finals. That'll be in Castle, which is down by, Castle High School, down by Newburgh, Indiana, a little, little west of, or east of, of what, what's down there? Evansville. Our JV squad's going to be doing the JV State Championship this Saturday in Greenfield Center. So our cheer, cheer teams had a great weekend. And then the end of the day, and I didn't make it, it was just, I'm old and it was too late. We, our band marched at nine o'clock on Saturday night and they play second at the Bands of America Super Regionals at Lucas Oil Stadium. And Avon beat us by point six of a point, point six. So watch out because the Greyhounds are coming. They were, they were named the outstanding musical performance of the competition. And if you haven't seen their show, if you didn't make, it's the fastest marching band show I've ever seen. I don't know what they're, what beat they're on when they're marching, but it is really fast. And so I can't wait for state, the national finals for our band, our band kids because they're doing a wonderful thing. So I kind of thought hard and long and hard about my bell ringer. And I think this is our last meeting before the upcoming elections. So I thought for my bell ringer, I would just want to remind everybody that it's time to vote. And so early voting in Hamlet County is underway. The election, election day is only two weeks from tomorrow, I believe. And the election has three contested seats for school board. And it doesn't matter what district you reside in. All Carmel voters will vote for three candidates, one from each school board voting district. So everybody votes for all three. So as soon as school board finals are completed and we have our list of candidates, I invite all of them to a meeting with me. And I met with each school board candidate one-on-one. And I asked them just a couple of simple questions. I asked them, why, what's your why? You know, what's your why for running for school board? What do you hope to accomplish, you know, as a school board member? And then I ask, what questions do you might have about the responsibilities of being on the school board member? Now, what I didn't ask them was, what's your political party affiliation? When we hire our amazing teachers and staff that Dr. Ostrich was talking about, we don't ask what party they belong to. We seek the best of the best and those who are committed to our students and our community. Here's a brief history lesson, if you wanted to know it. Sorry if you don't, but the earliest Indiana school board member was called the school trustee. And they were chosen to be trusted with overseeing the school. They did things such as making sure there was plenty of wood for the stove on cold winter days. They were keeping up the schoolhouse and sometimes they even hired teachers. Generally, they were responsible for supporting the area school. And so this is why you often hear the Board of School Trustees use today. That's, that's, that terminology came from way back then as to describe school boards in Indiana right now. The position was bipartisan then and it continues to be bipartisan today. And many believe that that decision has lasted over so many years just to keep politics out of the schoolhouse. Since we all serve, since we serve all families, all students of all different, you know, persuasions of thought and politics and you name it, we, everybody comes to public school. But this year has been different. We've seen political action committees and even super PACs from political parties outside of our community and even outside of our state, providing large sums of money to promote candidates here in Carmel, across the state of Indiana and all across our nation. They've been buying advertisements, sending texts, emails and flyers. And often they're criticizing other candidates or they're misrepresenting the school with misinformation. So it's real complicated to be a voter right now. So I just want to encourage everybody to do what we teach our kids. Do the research, study multiple sources of information and be an informed voter. Now, when I was a middle school principal and assistant principal, we would end our announcements with an encouraging quote of the day every morning. And then after that quote of the day, we had this tagline we would say. And the tagline was, remember, the choices you make today shape your world tomorrow. So I thought that would be an appropriate way to end my report. So remember, the choices you make between now and November the 8th will shape the world for our students, for our families and for our community. So choose well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Anything else from the board? I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.